All right, we're recording.
Okay, so we're going to start the planning commission meeting for Wednesday, January 13th, 2020. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
2021.
Oh, 2021, sorry. Do I have the right agenda then?
Yes, I made a mistake on the top.
Okay.
It got corrected in the one that was posted for the public but not for the PC.
Okay, okay. Well, thanks for making me look like an idiot, but we'll move on now. You're fine. So let's have Philip lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, hey, thank you. So number three on the agenda, the approval of the minutes from November 2nd, 2020.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
My second.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. So now we'll move on to number four, revised planning commission membership ordinance.
Nick, do you want to talk about that or do you want me to talk about that?
Yeah, I can briefly mention this. So the, um, the city council at their work study in November discussed the difficulty we were having getting a quorum of the planning commission. And because our planning commission had been made up of eight members, it required five of you to be in attendance in order for there to be a quorum. And the suggestion from the city attorney and from staff after looking at the issue was that if we reduce the planning commission to seven members, that we would only need four people to reach a quorum. And so we might have an easier time and fewer of those awkward minutes before a meeting where we're trying to call people and find out where people are at to get them to attend the meeting. So the city council did ultimately pass a ordinance changing the planning commission from a eight-member body to a seven-member body. And then all of the positions had to be renumbered. And so we kept the terms the same for all of you, but you're, you might be in a slightly different position number on the resolution that was included in the packet. And so we just wanted to share that that change had been made, but it doesn't affect anything else to do with the planning commission. And Sue Ann Martin Smith, that was the end of her term and rather than appointing a new planning commissioner or reappointing, that position lapsed and Sue Ann was, had intended to resign from the planning commission anyway. So it worked out, okay.
So on this, it has like position one through seven, are we assigned a position or is that just? What does that mean, anything?
That's, well, number one means that Annette, you're the best planning commissioner.
Oh, what does that mean that I'm number three?
It's just for the clerk to keep track of who's in what position so that when we pass the resolution appointing somebody to the position in the future, it'll say that whereas the city council hereby appoints Annette Stewart to position number one. And the city council positions also have numbers associated with them.
Okay, I didn't know if it was by area or how that works, so, okay, thank you. Is that all for that?
Yes, we just wanted to explain what the process was.
Okay, all right, so moving on to number five, we have the, oh, sorry, well done. Sorry about that. Um, election of the chair for 2021.
Is there a process or can we just go ahead and nominate?
I think we just nominate, is there anybody that wants to do it? Is anybody like?
Yeah, I nominate Annette.
Um.
Either Annette or Joe, because Joe's not here, so we can nominate him for everything.
So bad.
Back fast enough.
Yeah, Annette, this is Stephanie, if you're interested in serving again for 2021, I'll second Trish's nomination.
Oh, does anybody else want to do it? Because I will do it, but if somebody else wants to do it and have their turn.
You're the most experienced.
I don't know, Steph and I are kind of the same.
I don't mean time on the planning commission, I mean time in the role.
Okay, all right, I, I, I accept the nomination. Thank you.
Do we vote?
Yes. So, well, let's, let's put the vice, let's pick the vice first.
Ooh, I nominate Stephanie.
Second, so all those in favor of me, Annette, as the chair and Stephanie as the vice chair?
I mean, as long as Stephanie accepts.
Oh, I do, you're back.
Yay.
Be happy to.
Okay, all those in favor?
I, I.
All those opposed? All right. Thank you, guys. So now we can move on to business item number six, the public meeting and discussion of the 2021 shoreline master program.
Okay, and Nick, you may need to give me permission to share my screen.
I think you should be able to share now.
Okay. Okay, can everybody see the first, the cover page of the Redline Shoreline Master Program update?
Yes.
Okay. Um, what I'd like to do is, since this is the main document that's been amended, I'd like to just walk through the changes here and compare them to the description of the changes that were in the periodic review checklist that was provided to you as part of the packet to explain what each change was for, why we made it.
Hey, Carrie, can we wait one second? I realize I missed number two. Do you want me to do that later or can I do that right now, the audience comments?
Oh, oh, yeah, absolutely. I think you've got a couple of people who might want to speak.
Okay, sorry about that, guys. And so we're going to go back to agenda item number two, audience comments that aren't on the agenda. Does anybody want, have any comments or questions?
Yes, I do. My name is Shabazz Natchee and my wife is Elizabeth Natchee sitting next to me. Hi, and Happy New Year to all, and good to see you all and hope this is a better year for all of us. And, uh, and so we are here, we are, we are really pleased with what you guys are doing for the community and all of that. And at some point in time when I grow up, maybe I could be part of your team or something, but you're easy to work with and I really appreciate your time and the courtesy you have given us. So we are the owners of two properties located on seven, at 719 Sydney and 807 Sydney Avenue in Port Orchard. We are here to discuss your proposed.
How much is supposed to dial in on a Zoom? Look at that fucking address.
Hey, excuse me, excuse me, you need to mute yourself. Please continue.
Okay, can I go on?
Yes. Sorry for that.
No worries, no worries. And we are here to discuss your proposed comprehensive plan that impacts both of our properties at 719 Sydney and 807 Sydney Avenue. Your, you proposed to change the zoning of our two properties for our neighborhood mixed use medium density residential to commercial. Per your request on December 2nd, we are presenting our case again and requesting that the zoning of our properties remain unchanged. For prior discussions, our two properties were singled out in your proposed planning process. And for Port Orchard City Municipal Code for building type descriptions, we checked into that. It states that commercial zoning, I'm going to look at my notes in here, commercial zoning would preclude the building of single-family detached homes. As we stated before to the, to you folks, we purchased these properties to build our dream home on existing developed property at 807 Sydney Avenue. Please keep in mind that this property has, has an existing driveway that dates back to 1922 and has all the utility hookups such as water meters still in the property, all the water meter sewer line that is already capped on fire building that was on it and gas line that was hooked up to the, to the property that used to be on that, on that location. And, and since we did not seek nor ask this proposed changing, a change to take place, we do not believe that we need to file a comprehensive plan amendment. Additionally, we submitted our comments on, on determination of significant and EIS scope on 17th of August to inform you that we support, support alternative one, which is no zoning change, no action required. We are here, we are basically requesting that our zoning remain the same, which is medium density residential neighborhood mixed use. And we wanted to thank you again and we trust that you will not change our zone. Let me ask my wife to see if she has any questions, if I missed anything.
Tell you, you covered what we talked about.
Okay, again, we appreciate the time you have given us and, and please proceed.
Thank you so much. Does anybody else have any questions or comments that aren't on the agenda? Can you see any, Stephanie? I mean, Carrie?
Okay, um, thank you. Just for the benefit of the members of the public who are participating this evening, this is a public meeting to go over the draft revisions to the city shoreline master program. This is a required update by the Department of Ecology. It's required every seven years for every local jurisdiction to review their adopted shoreline master program against the requirements of the shoreline Management Act and other rules that have been adopted by the Department of Ecology and to see where deficiencies may be in our SMP shoreline master program and see where we need to update them as well as, this is an opportunity for us to bring the SMP into compliance with anything that we may have fallen out of compliance with updates to our zoning code with our comprehensive plan, other policies and regulations that the city has since our SMP has not been comprehensively updated since 2013. So we've been undertaking this process for about a year and a half. Our final SMP is due to the Department of Ecology in June of 2021. And so we've had a couple of meetings so far on more limited discussions about the SMP. You may remember a couple of months ago, we discussed the specific issue of climate change and sea level rise. We had a report prepared for us by Herrera Environmental where they, where they focused on the city's downtown shoreline and Sinclair Inlet and issues which are currently affecting us right now and are expected to be more significant in future related to downtown flooding, storm surge and that kind of thing, related to gradual sea level rise over time. And so some of that information, some of the, the information and recommendations that were prepared for us by Herrera have been incorporated into this document and I'll go through that tonight. We did go through that a couple of months ago, but I'll point out where it's been put into here. Some of the information that they did provide to us though will probably be dealt with in a larger overall update of the city's flood management code. And that's something that we will likely be doing with a consultant this year as well. So it's, because that's not just a shoreline issue, our flood management code needs updating in general. So where we feel that those were larger issues, some of that has been deferred for a larger comprehensive update for our code. But that was just kind of a little bit of background as to why we're doing this at this time. And I will go through, as I said, I'll go through the main document here that's been done in Redline. This is our main shoreline master program document. And all the changes that are being proposed right now are in Redline. And as I said, the checklist that goes along with this summarizes all of the changes that have been made, both the changes that were required by ecology and the changes that we are proposing as the city on a voluntary basis. So just going through fairly quickly, let's see. Get to where we started, okay. I'm going to go to, I'm going to bring, actually, I'm going to bring the periodic review checklist over here. It might be easier if I just check, go through the things that have been required by ecology first. Here, if you'll see, on the ecology checklist, which we are required to complete when we turn in our revisions, everything here is dated by year and that's because every year ecology makes a few, a few rule changes. So when the city comes in to do amendments, we can, we can do amendments to our SMP every year. And when we do that, we're required to bring our SMP up to date with the most recent versions of the shoreline management act and other ecology rules. We haven't really done a major update to our SMP in a few years. So we had, we had to do a few updates based on these ecology rule changes, but mostly we were actually in compliance. So just to go through this, we have made changes throughout our SMP. And you, in here, you'll see the review, we, we've done all of our reviews, some of them were not applicable, like we have no dredged material management program sites. But going through here, you can see where each one, I've reviewed it and I've made the revisions in here. And I also noted them on the sidebar in each action as to where an ecology review item was required in the redline document. Most of these were pretty simple. Adding to definitions of development, no action needed, forest practices. Did anybody have any specific questions about just the requirements from ecology to bring our, our rules up to date with ecology requirements? Because these are fairly simple. But I'd be happy to go through any of them with the planning commission or the public.
Carrie, if you're meaning to show the checklist right now on the screen, that's not what people are seeing.
That's not what people are seeing?
We're seeing the redline document. I mean, I was going through the checklist, like, because I have it open on a separate window, but I figured you might want to.
Okay.
Share the SMP checklist, yeah.
Thank you for telling me, because I thought, I thought that's what was up. Okay, do you see it now?
Nope, we're still the redline document.
Huh. How about now?
No.
Can you still see the redline document?
Yep.
I'm going to close that document. Um, let's see. Let's try this again and I apologize for that, I didn't realize it wasn't showing. How about now?
There it is, periodic review checklist.
Okay, sorry, that must have been very confusing for everyone who had no idea what I was pointing to. I am sorry, I was scrolling through here saying, every year, 2019, 2017, 2016, ecology has updated their own rules under the SMA, under the RCW and WAC, saying that these things need to be put into local SMPs every time those SMPs are updated, whether under the periodic amendment requirements every seven years or anytime a local government comes in voluntarily to do an amendment to their SMP. And so again, since we haven't done a comprehensive amendment to our plan in the last seven years, most of these we just needed to review. Done, NA, done, NA, and just take some minimal action to make sure we were in compliance with all of ecology's rules to date. So again, like, as I said, most of these were pretty minor, adding some definitions, adding references, no action needed, not applicable. But as I said, I'm happy to go through any of these individually, if any members of the public or the planning commission would like me to do so. Did anybody have any questions on any of these ecology required updates? I did not.
No.
Okay, then I will go through the rest of these and what I'm going to do is I'm going to take the checklist off. It's going to be easier, I think, for me to, I wish I could share two documents at once. I'm going to move the checklist to the side and bring up the redline again, so we can walk. Yes.
Hi, my name is Tara DeFord. I'm one of the business owners for Peninsula Feed Downtown. We're just trying to stay aware of any of the shoreline management changes. I was just wondering, I was looking at a couple of these specifics. Is there a way to see the specific details, like in 2019, row C, the legislature added restoring native kelp, eelgrass beds and native oysters? Is there a way to see specifics for those somewhere?
So right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what we did is we reviewed this to see if we met the requirements for this rule in our SMP. So what we did is we had our definition of enhancement, fish habitat enhancement projects, we now include a reference to this RCW, which contains this language. So now when you do fish enhancement projects, it now includes the restoration of native kelp, eelgrass and oysters specifically as fish enhancement projects. Previously, our definition of enhancement did not call that out.
Okay, and we can see all of those details for the RCW on our website, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks so much.
You're welcome. Did anyone else have questions about any of these ecology changes? Okay, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take the checklist off of screen sharing. And I'm going to share, I hope I'm doing this right, I'm going to try to share a new one. I want to share the redline. Thank you for bearing with me. I wish, like I said, I wish I could share two at once. Is this working? Do you see the redline shoreline master program? You did. Okay, thank you. All right, so going through this document, I just wanted to bring up again, though, let me bring up the checklist so I can refer to it on the side. All right.
So then Carrie, are we looking at the additional significant improvements on the checklist?
Yes, I am just getting down to where those start. One thing that I'll start with is that the reference documents in the SMP, these are referred to here, the appendices. The appendix, appendix A is the official shoreline maps, the shoreline jurisdiction map, and then each shoreline environment designation by segment. That appendix has remained, although I did have to amend a couple of the segment maps and I'll go through that, that was to keep them updated and consistent with our zoning maps, since there have been some changes that since this SMP was adopted. Appendix B, the critical areas ordinance, that has been deleted for the reason that when, when this SMP was adopted in 2013, the critical areas ordinance was in title 16. So for that reason alone, it would no longer be consistent. But also, there really is no reason to have an appendix with the critical areas ordinance in it to the, as an appendix to the SMP. And it makes it become inconsistent really easily, because then every time that we amend the critical areas ordinance, which is in title 20, then we have to also go and do an SMP amendment to our appendix B. And that is a whole separate process involving going through ecology and we don't want to do it. So what we want to do is have the critical areas ordinance, which is now in title 20, included by reference where we need to do so. So we should not have this in here as an appendix, I'm not really sure why we did it, but now it's removed. So now our restoration plan for habitat within the shoreline becomes appendix B. We've taken out the adoption resolution of the original SMP that doesn't really need to be in there. And so now appendix C will be our mitigation and restoration for redevelopment activities in the high intensity shoreline environment designation. We made a few changes to appendix E, which will now become C, and I'll go over those at the end of this discussion as well. The public participation plan for the original SMP 2013 has also been removed. Okay, going down to page 15. We made some changes here about references to plans, regulations or information sources, just to make it more clear that 1.6B, POMC chapter 2162 applies to critical areas in the shoreline jurisdiction and critical areas in the shoreline jurisdiction, wetlands, streams, geo hazard areas and so forth, continue to be protected by the CAO. But the SMP is the controlling authority in the shoreline jurisdiction in case of any conflicts. So we wanted that to be clear. And then we updated things here, just, just to make sure that we had the correct references for the comp plan and for the updated Blackjack Creek watershed assessment plan. We've updated the effective dates based on the most recent revisions that we did to our plan. This is an ecology checklist requirement, as I noted, this is one from the, up earlier in the checklist. We needed to put a section in here saying when our most recent amendments to this plan were adopted, that we're required to do an SMP review, what the, what the timeline is for this and what state requirements we are required to be in compliance with. So we just had to put a statement in here indicating that we will comply with this review period. And we will be putting this date in here once it's adopted. Let's see, I think we can go 32 is the next one I had as a major change. And if there was anything else on any of these pages I'm scrolling by that you had questions about, please stop me, because I'm just going to the major changes as I had indicated in the checklist. So do stop me if there's anything that I'm going by that you wanted to talk about. We did add here a policy section on climate change and sea level rise. Both, we added the language to our flood control section. We've added a new climate change and sea level rise section. Our SMP did not consider climate change and sea level rise before, almost no SMPs have before this point. But it's something that ecology is asking local jurisdictions to consider in this round of review. We are actually going to be one of the very first to adopt a section in our SMP, which looks at potential impacts to our saltwater shoreline and starts planning for the future through both our SMP and potentially through through both our SMP and potentially through our zoning and flood management code. So we are actually going to be in the forefront here if this is adopted. And we wanted to make sure that this was in here as a policy statement, that we are, as part of our SMP implementation, we want to protect coastal resources from the potential deleterious effects of sea level rise over change due to, over time due to climate change. These, these impacts would include increased coastal flooding, loss of shoreline habitat, saltwater intrusion, damage to public and private improvements in infrastructure, and the mobilization of contaminated sediments. And all of these impacts were discussed in the Herrera report that you read a couple of months ago. This is in response to the recommendations that you saw, and you'll see more policy changes, more policy changes and development regulations down in later sections in here, again, based on that advisement. Okay, here, under 6.4 flood hazard reduction, we have made changes under this management policy, management policy SMP GP14. We wanted to make it clear that we discourage future non-water dependent development, which means development that does not require being on the shoreline in order to exist. Water dependent development is, let us say, a marina, a boatyard, a boat launch, something like that where you must be on the shoreline in order to continue your normal operations. So we want to discourage future non-water dependent development, including the redevelopment and expansion of existing non-water dependent development in areas that are lying at or below the 100-year flood elevation, unless that flood hazard is reduced by removing, moving, elevating, and/or building structures at new higher elevations. So when you come in to redevelop a site that's lying at or below the 100-year flood elevation, we're going to be requiring that those sites are, that those new buildings are elevated. We don't want any more buildings that are all, that are coming in that are already subject to coastal flooding, subject to tidal surge. We need to be planning for the fact that we are already seeing impacts from sea level rise, and we need to have buildings that are going to be able to function in the future in the 20, 40, 50-year time span. So flood, flood hazard reduction may also include adding freeboard to existing shoreline armor, so creating taller sea walls in areas that are frequently flooded. This is something that, that is subject to ecology review, but is supported in areas where shoreline armoring currently exists. And so this continues through here. We're making it clear that we are trying to ensure that redevelopment in areas within the 100-year flood hazard area is either water dependent use, or that redevelopment is elevated to reduce the risk of flooding impacts. We also made sure, made clear that the creation of new that would be located entirely within a floodplain, or the flood hazard areas should not be allowed, unless the intent is for this ladder tract to remain undeveloped for the purposes of ecological restoration or development setback. Basically, if you're already within 100-year flood hazard area, you don't need to be building here. If you're creating a new lot and the whole thing is within a floodplain or a flood hazard area, that is not going to be allowed. And so down here, SMP GP 20, 21, and 22, these are new policies. These direct the city to, to create new maps and to require applicants to undertake new responsibilities. The city is going to be required to create a coastal flood risk map, which shows the city's base 100-year coastal flood elevation area, including a future projection of additional areas which have at least a 50% probability of being flooded within 20 years. This information was provided to us by Herrera. So this just needs to be mapped at this point and provided to the public. And we hope that this will be a really useful resource for property owners, for developers, for anyone who is concerned about their business, their investment, their shoreline residents, anyone who is interested and concerned about planning for the future of the downtown. And so this 21 requires us to consistently and constantly evaluate our coastal flood hazard reduction policies and our coastal flood risk map, and to keep them updated and revised according to best available science. So as the science gets better, and as we understand more and more what's happening with our downtown shoreline, we will continue to refine and update our policies. SMP GP 22, we will also map all shoreline locations in which there are known contaminated sediments, and develop a long-term plan to evaluate and address those in need of attention due to the risk of mobilization due to coastal flooding. This was another issue that was addressed by Herrera, where if you have contaminated sediments downtown, particularly because downtown is all on fill, and a lot of those areas, we know, do you have some areas where either the fill itself was contaminated, or the uses that have been on those sites long term have introduced contamination. As you start to get saltwater intrusion underneath, or overtopping by coastal flooding, you start to get those sediments moving. They start to move out of where they are currently located, and they can move into other areas. And so we need to be able to have a plan in place for mapping and dealing with those sediments in the long term, especially when we start having more redevelopment of our downtown shoreline. Does anyone have any questions so far? Okay. GDR 12, newer expanded development or uses in the shoreline zone, anything that would require structural flood control works within 100-year flood hazard area, a stream, a channel migration zone, or a floodway are prohibited. This would include things like dams or other diversionary structures. GDR 13, this relates to the requirement that the city has to provide a map of contaminated sediments. As part of the city shoreline permit application review process, all proposed development and redevelopment in the city shoreline that requires a permit shall determine and disclose whether sediment material on the development site, including fill, is contaminated and requires remediation to prevent the spread of contamination through mobilization due to coastal flooding events. So this requirement will apply whether or not the contaminated area on the site will be disturbed as part of the development process. We need to know that, that it's there, whether or not it's actually going to be disturbed as part of whatever the development or redevelopment proposal will be. If the contaminated sediment at risk of mobilization is determined to be present, the city shall require a remediation plan as a condition of the shoreline permit approval. This is important, because that will not only help us map each site, but to try to come up with a cohesive plan for dealing with downtown contaminated shoreline areas, potentially trying to come up with requests for grants, as they may be available from the state or from the feds for this as well. Shoreline vegetation conservation. This is just one of the things that was recommended by Herrera for increased stormwater filtration and restoration capabilities through, through vegetation. And so we are just saying in here that we shall require, we're feasible restoration of native shoreline and aquatic vegetation in mitigation restoration plans, and in stormwater management for redevelopment activities within the shoreline area. So when you come in to, when you have a shoreline permit, and you either have to do a mitigation or a restoration plan, or you have to do a stormwater plan, we're just going to ask that you do restoration of native vegetation wherever that is feasible. Redevelopment activities in the high intensity shoreline, shoreline environment designation also have to comply with the vegetation conservation and restoration requirements of appendix E. That, actually, I need to note that that will become appendix C of the plan. They have a little bit more stringent requirements for that. So 6.7 is where we created a more specific and lengthy section on climate change and sea level rise. We tried to spell out not only what we kind of want people to be able to do right now under the shoreline permit process, but what we think the city's responsibilities are for its citizens and its developers, property owners in future. So some of this is, is, is future related, some of it is going to be implemented right away. Under the management policies, the city should create specific development and building design standards for the downtown shoreline that address issues related to coastal hazards and impacts from future sea level rise. And these include coastal flooding, earthquake liquefaction and tsunami risk, saltwater intrusion, mobilization of contaminated sediments, and impacts to geologic hazard areas. So we will have some work to do. If this is adopted, we need to come up with specific standards that will be incorporated into, into a future amendment to the SMP that will be specifically focused on coastal hazards. And they will be for development and building standards, primarily, I think, for the downtown shoreline, and a lot of it will probably have to do with ensuring elevation. But they may, there may be other issues as well. During each periodic review of the SMP, the city will evaluate its development and building design standards and revise them as needed for the downtown shoreline in order to protect against these risks. So this is requiring us, us every eight years during our periodic review to make sure that, again, that we have kept up with the best available science, that we're making sure that what we're requiring of our permities is the most up to date with ecology's requirements, with the state's science, and that we continue to provide the best available information to our citizens. So the use table, which has all of the allowable land uses in the shoreline zone, we updated this a little bit. The most significant thing was that our, our use table did not have water enjoyment as a use. I'm not sure why. I think it probably just got left out by accident, honestly. Just to kind of explain what these are, commercial, water dependent, water related, water enjoyment. As we said previously, water dependent means you have to be near water or on the water for your use to function, marina, or a boatyard, or a boat launch, something like that. You've got to have the water right there. You've got to be on it. Water related means it's, it's nice if you're right on the water, but you don't have to be. So let's say that you're a kayak rental, or a canoe sales store, something like that. It's nice if you could go right, right there from one to the other, but you don't have to be. You, you can buy a boat somewhere else, and you can take it to the boat launch and launch it. So that's water related. Water enjoyment is broader than both of those. And that can include things like a park that has passive recreation, even where it has a viewing plaza where benches and picnic tables are oriented towards the view. It can be a restaurant that provides a public terrace, where people can sit and enjoy the view, or even something like a hotel that provides trails down to the waterfront for the public to access and enjoy the water. So that's very, that's very broad, but it tries to provide certain categories to show where you really need to be on the water, and where you're providing enjoyment of the water, but do not necessarily need to be located right on it. So I wanted to, we wanted to add this category, since we didn't have it before, to make our ability to have commercial development in here a little bit more flexible. And we added, it's, it's not allowed in the natural environment. That one is supposed to be the most conservative, so it's not allowed for any commercial use. Urban conservancy, that is conditional, as it is for the others, permitted in the high intensity, conditional in the shoreline residential, and not allowed in aquatic. There, there is no water enjoyment use. You would have an aquatic, it would have to be dependent or water related. Does anyone have any questions about that? That's a little bit different. No? Okay.
Yeah, Carrie, I do.
Okay.
So you brought up the commercial water enjoyment, and then you mentioned restaurant with a viewing platform. Does that have to be a, a, a public access separate from the restaurant, or can the restaurant actually seat diners out on this platform and have access only through the restaurant to this platform to be fall into the water enjoyment, the new water enjoyment? Description.
Um, it, it can actually be both, because the, the way that we have our appendix E written, there should be public access provided for any redevelopment on our downtown shoreline where that is feasible. And so we would hope that people could combine this. It doesn't have to, if you have a, let's say, a second floor restaurant, and you have a terrace or balcony that provides a grand sweeping view for the diners, that can be considered water enjoyment. But we would also be asking for that redevelopment and that downtown parcel of some public access, potentially some preservation of public views. And that would be part and parcel of that permit for the redevelopment for that restaurant or that mixed-use building. So we would be looking for a combination of public and private views for that water enjoyment use.
Okay, thank you.
We also provided a little bit more of a comprehensive look at mixed use. Mixed use in terms of the shoreline is a little bit different from what it is under our zoning code. And here, we just wanted to make it clear that mixed use can be non-residential uses. So you could have a combination of retail office, and maybe like civic center, or something like that. You can have non-residential uses that include one or more water dependent or water enjoyment uses. So you could, you could have a kayak launch, you could have your restaurant with your public access, and you, you don't necessarily, you, we wanted to make it as flexible as possible. So if you have non-water enjoyment uses, you have some limitations here that you don't have down here. For one thing, it's conditional in, in the shoreline residential environment, and it wouldn't be allowed in the shoreline residential environment if it's a non-water oriented use, meaning it doesn't have any orientation to the shoreline, doesn't have any real reason it has to be on the shoreline. So we just wanted to make that a little bit more clear, the distinction between the two. Um, public use, we didn't have a category in here before, just to kind of make that clear. Oh, when I see a mistake here, I need to fill those two in. I can note. Um, public use is civic use, government-owned, non-transportation facility, so like a, the ferry terminal, something like that. Or the city hall, or a civic center, a convention center, or something like that. We wanted that to be put in here as a, as a potential use that stood alone, because it's not commercial, it's not necessarily office, it's not retail. We just wanted to give that a separate use in here. And by the way, since those were forgotten, that would probably be conditional in the shoreline residential zone and not permitted in the aquatic zones. That would be an X and a C. shoreline residential zone and not permitted in the aquatic zones. That would be an X and a C. Did anybody have any questions about anything else in the use table? Okay. Just wanted to point this one out. Agricultural activities and uses are not permitted within the marine or the saltwater shoreline jurisdiction of Sinclair inlet and the Estorin shoreline jurisdiction of Blackjack Creek. The Estorin shoreline jurisdiction of Blackjack Creek is the area where, where you have saltwater influence. So that extends a little way up from the mouth of the creek from Sinclair inlet. It doesn't go all that far up. But in that area and along the saltwater shoreline, shoreline, where it is permitted under zoning, we would not want someone to come in doing commercial agriculture. That doesn't prevent anybody from growing flowers or having a greenhouse or having chickens or anything like that. But as agriculture is defined in our SMP, we would not want commercial agriculture in these areas. So that is banned. And we also have removed from the industrial import development section. We also removed the section that said in areas designated for industrial use, non-water oriented industrial uses may be allowed if the site is physically separated from the shoreline by another property or public right of way. We don't really have any industrial uses on our shoreline right now. The boatyards, the haulouts, the boat building centers that we have, they're not, those are not really industrial. Those are commercial, heavy commercial uses. Industrial is more like mining, dredging, storage of equipment, things like that. We're not really trying to encourage those on our waterfront. And especially for non-oriented industrial uses. So again, those are the uses that don't need to be on our waterfront. And we really are trying to move those away from our waterfront and encourage uses that are more appropriate for our shoreline jurisdiction. So that has been removed. Here on page 57, we just wanted to point out that as we are trying to protect public views of harbor areas and other vistas of our shoreline. We just want to make it clear that while we don't protect individual private views either under our SMP or under our zoning code, there are overlay districts, our downtown overlay district. And our view protection overlay district, both of which apply in parts of the downtown and up the hill. And so certain private views may be protected because they are located in the overlay districts, which are in Title 20 of our municipal code. So we just put that in there as a cross reference. Under marinas, we wanted to strengthen these couple of policies that are in here about people who are having extended moorage or living aboard on their boats outside of the marinas that we have downtown. Our police have had some issues, some enforcement issues with people who are living aboard their vessels on the waters of the state, but we're being asked to enforce that. You can only stay in your boat for a certain amount of time. It's in our jurisdiction because our jurisdiction on Sinclair inlet goes halfway across the inlet. The other half of it is either in Kitsap County jurisdiction or in the city of Bremerton jurisdiction, depending on who's on the other side to the north. But we are the ones being asked to enforce boaters who are overstaying their welcome or who are doing illicit discharge, who are creating problems, noisy, drunk, whatever. And so we've talked to the police in the past about, we don't have a lot of teeth in the SMP about, or we don't have much in the SMP that addresses people living or not living on vessels outside of the marina. We did have, we do have regulations in here about live aboard in the marina. So we just wanted to make it clear in here that vessels are prohibited from extended mooring on waters of the state unless that moorage is in compliance with the open moorage requirements of the WAC, which addresses the limits on how long you can stay on your boat and in any one place and how far away you have to move after that time is up. And then no vessel that is used as a live aboard residence, that's a full-time live aboard residence, shall be moored on waters of the state outside a marina. So hopefully that will help both the marinas and the state DNR and our police have a little bit more regulation ability for that, for that particular problem. Parking. Parking is something that was not addressed in our SMP previously. And this, while it's an accessory use to many other uses, it can also be a standalone use. We can, we have, as you know, we have a lot of public parking lots down on our downtown shoreline. And it's also possible to have it as a standalone use within a parking garage, something that comes up every so often when we're talking about downtown and potential redevelopment. So we wanted to make sure that we addressed it this time around. Because this, this is always coming up. We have, we don't have enough parking downtown. We need a parking garage. We need to get those lots off the shoreline, et cetera, et cetera. So it just seemed like this was, this was a timely, this was a timely issue to revisit in this update. And we wanted to be clear that consistent with the SMA, this is, this is in the, the State Shoreline Management Act, parking lots are not preferred uses in the shoreline jurisdiction. So what that means is that where no feasible alternatives exist to new parking lots or, and that can also include parking within structures, they can be permitted or conditionally permitted. But they should not be put there if there is a feasible alternative. So that's something that when someone comes in to do redevelopment downtown is possible for them to put in parking lots, parking within their structure if they want to do that type of building. But they need to show why they couldn't, you know, put parking outside of the shoreline jurisdiction. And a simple answer is, well, if my entire site is within the shoreline jurisdiction, that's where my parking is going to be. Or if I'm just using an existing parking lot and redeveloping it, that's where it's going to be. So we're not trying to make it impossible. We're just trying to say that you need to show why it is not feasible to have your parking outside the shoreline jurisdiction. SMP SU 48, city should explore options for reducing or removing publicly owned parking lots within the shoreline jurisdiction. This would include conversion to shoreline and public access, public water dependent and water enjoyment uses and shoreline recreation facilities such as beaches and fishing areas. This does not require that the city eventually remove or reduce the parking lots downtown, but it does encourage the city to look at the possibilities for future reduction of those large parking lots that we have downtown. There may be other options for those areas in future. So that's just something that we want to encourage in here as a, as a policy. And going along with those management policies, the development regulations underneath, putting new parking areas outside the shoreline jurisdiction where feasible, parking for redevelopment in the high intensity shoreline environment must meet the requirements of Appendix C. That's the appendix that deals with redevelopment downtown. Surface parking as a principal use, including commercial pay parking or parking for offsite uses is not allowed in the natural urban conservancy or shoreline residential environments. It's simply not suitable for those areas. All of our surface parking right now is located in the high intensity environment and we would want to keep it that way. Standalone structure parking is not allowed within the shoreline jurisdiction. So if you remember, the shoreline jurisdiction is 200 feet from the ordinary high watermark. And so what we, what this would mean is that a parking garage, standalone structure parking, standalone garage would not be allowed within 200 feet of the ordinary high watermark. And that's, that doesn't mean that you can't have all of your other development as part of a, a larger redevelopment plan within that 200 feet and a garage be outside of it. Or that you can't have a parking garage, a parking floors be part of a mixed use building in the shoreline jurisdiction, but we just don't want a standalone parking garage with no other uses being part of it. Are there any questions about parking? Anything else? Within the shoreline jurisdiction, new utility mounting and transmission poles are limited to 35 feet in height or the height limit provided for the zone by Title 20, whichever is less. We didn't have any regulations in the SMP about the, any limits on height for utility poles. And so we just wanted to put something in here. 35 feet in height is the shoreline management act's limit for houses in the shoreline jurisdiction. And so that just seemed like a reasonable height. It, it, we, it's unlikely we would actually see anything that high in the shoreline jurisdiction, but we just wanted to go ahead and put that in there as a, a cap on new potential utility poles in this area. Okay. Getting down into shoreline exemptions. We had a large section here for shoreline exemptions, shoreline exemptions under our old SMP. The old SMP, as you can kind of see, spelled everything out. Basically what it did was it took the entire SMA and put it in here. We don't need to do that. In fact, it, it doesn't, it doesn't really do anything helpful because then every time the SMA is updated, again, we would have to do a shoreline amendment to keep ourselves consistent. So what I've done here is just changed this so that we reference the RCW. That's all we really need to do. There are other things as well that ecology requires us to do to say what actions are exempt, remedial actions, boatyard improvements, wash dot improvements, environmental excellence programs and other projects that are authorized through the Energy Facility Site Evaluation Council. So all of these projects are exempt. And we just put in all of the disclaimers and other things in here that are required for exemptions. And this is really all that we need for our exemption section. And that way we don't have to update our master program every time ecology makes a change to their exemption sections in the WAC or the RCW. 8.4, multiple permits required. We did not have a section in our existing SMP that discussed what happens when you need more than one type of shoreline permit at a time. What if you're, you have to come in for a shoreline development permit, but you also need a variance or you need a conditional use permit at the same time? Or, you know, what if you need a preliminary plat and you need a conditional, a shoreline conditional use permit? So this is just saying that when you do need more than one permit type for any type of development or use, you will, you will have all your permit applications processed and reviewed concurrently according to the highest permit type. So we have types one through five and permit types, permit processing are specified in POMC 2020. And in, I need to make change there too. That's RCW 9058140. And if there are any conflicts between the requirements of these regulations, the more stringent requirement shall control. But we just want to make sure that this is consistent with Title 20, which requires that all permits for any development application be processed at the same time according to the highest type of permit. So if you have a shoreline development permit, but you also need a variance, which is a higher type of permit, has to go to, to potentially a hearing examiner and then to ecology for final approval. They will all be bundled together. They will all go to ecology for, for final approval. Let me get past all those exemption deletions. Okay, so in the existing SMP, the existing SMP allowed administrative decisions to be made by the planning director. And it also had hearing examiner decisions. So you could have, I guess, a, a minor type of substantial development permit and one that had more significant changes going to the hearing examiner. But our SMP didn't actually provide a process to determine what's minor and what's major. And then how you're, you know, supposed to determine what that process is that each one follows. So we agreed that it's good to have both an administrative process for minor things and a more significant process that would go to the hearing examiner for major amendments, for, for major development proposals. But we needed to set out a process for that. So we've provided that here for administrative shoreline substantial development permits. Gave the types of activities, the permit process, and then we've laid out what kinds go to the hearing examiner and the permit process. So now we can actually use this ability, which we actually couldn't do before because we didn't have any process laid out for administrative permits. Shoreline conditional use permits. We've just made changes here that bring them up to date with what's in Title 20 for our permit processing requirements. Shoreline variances, our existing SMP did not provide for administrative variances. That's something that the, the other planners had asked for because every time there was a variance, no matter how small it was, it had to go to the hearing examiner. And this is unnecessary cost in time for many people to have to go to the hearing examiner, examiner for something that, you know, could be only, you know, something that could be easily approved by the planning director. And so we've created both administrative and hearing examiner processes for the shoreline variance. Now, these do have to be ultimately approved by ecology, but the process to go through is much less extensive and expensive if it goes through the planning director first with the administrative process. So now we have a choice. And we took out this table of permits and procedures because this has all been superseded now by what is in Title 20. We referenced Title 20. We don't, we don't have two processes. We don't have two, one for shoreline permits and one for everything else. They all follow the same process. Does anybody have any questions up to now? Shoreline enforcement and penalties. This used to be a really big section. And possibly this is because we didn't have a lot in our previous municipal code on enforcement. And that's something that has really been beefed up a lot in the last couple of years and beefed up and expanded into what the city's options are for both civil and criminal penalties for code enforcement. And so we have referred back to our authority for, for the city's code enforcement officer and the city shoreline administrator to enforce the SMP and referring back to chapter 2002 for enforcement and penalty provisions to be enforced. We really don't need to have anything else in here. We don't want anything that would be inconsistent. If anything in 2002 is changed, we just need to have this cross referenced in here. So the rest of whatever's in here, everything else in here has been removed. Definitions. We have new definitions in here for boatyard, channel migration zone, floodway, freeboard in the sense of shoreline armoring. Revised definition for mixed use. A new definition for the one hundred year flood elevation. And for the one hundred year flood hazard area. We added a definition for single family residents. There had been some question about what is a single family residence because you could say that it's just a detached house. Or, but does that include like a, an attached house or a town home? So where you actually own it? But you have more, one or more walls that are attached to another house. But there's, there's actually a definition of that in the SMA. And so I wanted to go ahead and put that in there. And it actually is defined for the shoreline as a detached dwelling unit that is designed for and occupied by one family, including those building structures and developments within a contiguous ownership, which are of a normal appurtenance. So that means that can also include your sheds, detached garages, greenhouses, things like that. And this does not prevent your single family residents from containing an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit. So that does not, having an ADU does not mean that you're no longer a single family residence, but we wanted to make sure we had this definition in here. And then the last definition we needed in here was vessel. Because that, that relates back to our definition about people living on vessels that are on waters of the state. And so we just needed a definition in here about what is a vessel. Vessels are, you know, it, it means a ship, boat, barge, and any other floating craft. Whether it has an engine or not, whether it's running or not, whether it's missing its sails and so forth. And this was the definition for Seattle that they put in the last time they updated their SMP. So hopefully this will work for them as well. Okay, so this is the end of the changes that we have proposed for the main part of the document. Were there any other questions? Is there anything else you'd like me to go through in here? And I, before I just show the appendix and the maps.
Carrie, I do have a question.
Okay.
You, you referenced back there, the city's shoreline administrator. Does, does the city actually have a shoreline administrator?
Yes, that is the planning director and that's Nick.
Oh. Alright, thank you.
Yeah. In fact, let's see. I know it's defined, I think it's defined. There we are. Shoreline administrator is the director of the Department of Community Development or his, her designee. Anything else?
Carrie, I have a question for you, if I may ask this question. This was a very nice comprehensive program that you have that you included the ecology program in it. I really liked what I saw. And I just have a question regarding the multiple permitting and substantial permitting at the shoreline area by a developer. I candidate, aren't they almost the same if a developer is going in to develop some area on the shoreline? And it requires whole array of things that they need to do. They would have to put a permit upfront for all these efforts that they are going to be doing at the waterfront, anything that touches the water. Of course, Army Corps gets involved with them because Army Corps owns all the waterways and anything that, anything water touches, they own all the wet surfaces. So isn't that the same, the per, multiple permit and substantial permit? Or I missed something in the presentation?
If an Army Corps permit is required, and, and remember, not everything is waterfront. So if you are, well, if you have a property in the shoreline jurisdiction, you may not actually have waterfront. And so the Army Corps probably wouldn't get involved if you didn't have a waterfront property. But if you did have a waterfront property, or if you were doing dredging in a stream or something like that, and you did need an Army Corps permit, that is a, a federal permit that's going to be issued outside of the jurisdiction of the city. And so our multiple permits required is owing to do with what our jurisdiction is, our city permits. We would be bundling all of our city permits together. If you're getting a subdivision, if you're getting a clearing and grading permit, if you're getting a shoreline conditional use permit, we don't want you to have to go through, okay, now you need this permit, now you need that permit. Okay, now you've got those, now you need another one. We want you to be able to have all your permits assembled, heard by one hearing examiner or by the shoreline administrator and approved at once. We don't want that stretched out into a lengthy timeline or an expensive process. But we don't have control over Army Corps permits or other federal permits.
Understood. So as I understand, and I was involved with Bill Gate when he was building his property on Lake Washington. And they had to put in, they wanted to put the, the boat, the docking stations in there, several of them. And they wanted to do some rockeries along the Lake Washington area. And they came to Army Corps at that time. I was assigned that opportunity to go and help them out about the do's and don'ts. So they did have to get a permit from, from Army Corps for doing the rockwork and also driving the piling into the, into the Lake Washington for for their docks. And Trish, I love your dog.
And I'm sorry for the distraction.
No, 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 very cute. So anyway, I wonder if you work with them or, or just the city of Port Orchard would just issue and per, issue a permit to the developers, shoreline developers and, and everything is acceptable down. I don't have any intentions, by the way, to develop anything on the waterfront.
No, no, that, that's, that's fine. Generally, I mean, when we get a permit in, we are, we send out the permit application and then we send out our SEPA determination to a number of agencies and that includes the Corps of Engineers. And if they find out during that, that time of review, or if the applicant has submitted something with the original permit indicating that they need a core permit, they're going to have to get that permit before they go to the hearing examiner or get other approval from the city. We don't condition a permit on getting core approval later and ecology will not approve a, a variance or a, or shoreline conditional permit on getting federal permits later. So if you need those permits, you're going to have to have them in hand. Or at least have them, you're going to have to have them issued contingent upon receiving your local shoreline permits. If, if, if the Corps will do it that way.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let me see. And I know, and I'm trying to, to wrap this up. I know this has been quite an explanation. Let me see if I can just do the other ones really quickly. I just wanted to show you what's been changed on the maps, basically. I need to stop sharing on this document. And I need to bring up this.
Carrie, did you guys work with a local compliance officer on this? Or do they, do they sign off on any of this along the way? Or is this all digested at one time?
With the local, do you mean with ecology?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, they have reviewed an initial draft of, of this. And they've also reviewed and given comments back and suggestions that were incorporated about the flood hazard and sea level rise. So yeah, we've been working with them all the way along the way. Oh, why is this not going to let me share my screen? Let's see. Appendix A?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Just wanted to show you the one thing that I've changed here. Now things changed here. This is our shoreline jurisdiction. This is what I was talking about where all along here along Sinclair inlet and then this is the estering portion approximately of Blackjack Creek. But our jurisdiction goes all the way up here to sixteen based upon the flow of, of the creek. Haven't changed that. Going down here to the shoreline segments, these are the shoreline environments, urban conservancy, high intensity, natural shoreline residential. Urban conservancy is low density development where you're trying to have some residential, some low intensity uses coincide with trying to preserve as much native vegetation, as natural shoreline forms as possible. And restoration also where possible too. So it's in this area right here, right here at Ross Point. We had areas in here, right about here, here, that were indicated for shoreline residential. But in our zoning code, actually, this is all indicated as green belt, all of this along here. And so that doesn't really comply with shoreline residential, which would, could be a higher level of development that could be both single family and multifamily. So green belt most closely is associated with urban conservancy, which is again, the, the preservation of natural shoreline features with some limited urban development. So I've changed this all to urban conservancy. And in that segment, you'll see that there. This is natural here because that's right on that stream corridor. And right here. So those are the only things changed on the map, but I just wanted you to see that to know that those shoreline residential areas have now been changed. So I think that's it for the, the major changes to, to our draft. Do you, does anyone have any other questions or is there anything else I can explain or is that, is that enough?
This is very impressive, Carrie. That's a lot of work. Thank you.
I was gonna say, that's a lot of work. Nice job.
So the next thing that's going to happen is that we're going to be coming back to you next month with a final draft and a public hearing. We will be cleaning up some things. You saw a few things that needed to be fixed here. And we may have some additional comments and recommendations, both from our internal departments and from ecology, which we will incorporate. And public comments that we receive between now and the public hearing or after the public hearing, we'll be doing our SEPA determination also next week. Sending that out for, for public comment. And we hope to have this into ecology for final review within the next month. And then they will either choose to have another public hearing of their own. Hopefully they will not. But if they do, they, they will probably hold it online. But in any case, we hope to have a new SMP adopted maybe sooner than June of twenty twenty-one. And that will be it for us for the next eight years. So does anybody have any questions for Carrie or Nick?
Not.
Okay, so hearing and seeing none. I guess that's it for tonight's meeting. Unless there's anything else somebody wants to comment about real quick.
I just want to say, Carrie, thank you for explaining, going through all of that and pointing out the big changes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, very nicely done.
Yeah.
Well, that was kind of dry. So if anyone, you know, if anyone wants to ask me individually or any member of the public out there, if you want to email me to go through any of these issues or just talk through anything on your own, please get in touch with me, phone or email, and I'm happy to do so.
Thank you. Carrie, can you put your email on the chat?
Let me put my email, what?
Um, we should use the chat feature because those records can't be recorded in the, the video recording.
Oh, just send any comment. This is for the public or anybody else, planning@cityofportorchard.us. And it will get to me. All right. Is that it? We need to go. So Trish can play with her dog some more, I guess. It was a great meeting, you guys. Thank you to all the public that was able to attend with us. We, we do enjoy it when other people are here.
Definitely.
Um, in saying that, everybody have a great night and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.
Good night, everyone.